Planning Commission meeting. Fred Fox has an announcement.
Yeah, I would like to just take a second here and introduce Beth Moiski, who is the new Superior Assistant Town Manager. And introduce her to the Planning Commission because she will be attending meetings with myself. And at times, sometimes attorney when we need it. So, welcome.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Chairperson John Krecraft, Vice Chairperson Craig Prestisado.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Ian Elverson.
Here.
Clint Folsen.
Here.
Wallace Harden here.
Bob McCool.
Here.
Michelle Ripmester.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Beth Moiski, here. No attorney, planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Okay. At this time, it's time for public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Please limit to five minutes per person if you have something to bring up. George?
George Cufford, 119 South Fourth. I'll bring something up. Maybe you ought to have a drawing down here and we'll get more people going around here to our meetings, huh? We had a comment last week that I was the only one here, and I guess I'm the only one here again tonight. So maybe have a drawing, drawing people in. We're gonna have to find an interest here.
Our own little lottery.
Something, something we're gonna have to give.
Okay, thanks, George. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda and approval of the March 15th, 2011 minutes. Everybody?
I move to approve the minutes.
Got a motion and a second.
Craig, please answer. Commissioner Prestisado, can you say who it is because the tape doesn't always catch who says it? So can you say that Joanne made motion?
Okay. Joanne made a motion and Clint seconded the motion?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Ricker seconded the motion?
I have a comment.
Yes?
It says there was a short discussion to clear up some items talked about, and I think there was some pretty... There was more significant things said in that meeting, and I think having one sentence to describe what happened in that meeting was not sufficient, so...
And that's fine. I debated, because I didn't do the minutes, Shannon does the minutes for the Planning Commission. And I said, you know, I think it needs to be elaborated a little bit, and she says, well, that's about all that was said. Since I wasn't here, I had no idea, so I take her word for it. If I could go back to her and say the commissioners would like more information in the minutes and go from there.
I think you all saw Bob's email about this meeting, which he reviewed the tape, did a very thorough summary of what happened in that meeting, and even included Mr. Cufford's quotes, which I think, I think that should be documented in these meeting minutes.
Okay. So then we can just not approve his vote down the minutes, and then we'll bring it back for another time for approval.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So we're gonna...
Were we trying to incorporate some of the comments about that?
Something more specific?
My only comment is there's one sentence here that says nothing about what was discussed at that meeting, and my, and my suggestion is that the meeting minutes should talk about what happened at the meeting.
Okay. Yep, so I know. Okay. All right. Okay, moving on. Discussion and consideration regarding Marshall Road triple left improvements. Presentation by staff.
I'll just introduce this issue that's being presented by our Public Works Director, Herb Kohler. Considering that the addition of a third left turn on Marshall Road to Macaslin Boulevard northbound, just, there's one little thing. This triple left was approved in the original PD for the marketplace a number of years ago. So it was not constructed, and now it's up for some discussions. Kurt?
Mr. Fox, thank you for the intro. Good evening, Commissioners. Today, as we talked about, we're gonna be talking about the Marshall Road and Macaslin. Contemplation of adding a triple left, which isn't the original PD. And I'm just gonna kind of work through this presentation. If you'd be able to stop me at any time, ask questions or go into deeper detail if you'd like, and we can address those questions at whatever point that happens. This is a project that is part of the Superior 2011 approved CIP. It is the Superior Metropolitan Improvement District, and the current budget for it, it's approved, is $100,000. Couple goals that we had out of this project. We wanted to look at safety possibilities. We want to look at capacity possibilities and overall of service for the entire area. This area, Marshall Road being on the bottom east-west, and Macaslin being to the right north-south, carries about 20,000 to 30,000 cars per day. And it is the Marshall Road intersection and Macaslin Road intersection in particular has the highest amount of accidents in the town for the period of accident reports that we have. That data is from 2006 to roughly 2009. There are approximately 35 accidents in this area, and up on the north side of the interchange is our second most, approximately 23 accidents over that period of time. So we felt, you know, we've been looking at things we can do in this area, and this is, this is one of those things. So what we're anticipating, it's a little rough to see here, we're getting cut off by the Windows taskbar, but kind of try to color code the three lanes. We have what we call the left or inner lane that we'd be going to Boulder, and that has also been discussed to be a Louisville lane as well. Up around where the eastbound off-ramp is, where the red lane, where the red, this lane with the red marking is actually flows into a Louisville straight shot, and then you can also get to the westbound left turn lane. So that's what the red lane represents. The blue, which, and the red lane isn't existing lane, it's an existing turn lane with about a 400-foot pocket. The blue represents the existing straight that's there now and would, or the existing left that's there now, and it would continue as it does now, and it would be expressed as a Louisville only lane. There has been discussion at the board level of possibly making that a US 36 as well, but the proposal is for a Louisville only. And then finally, green, which you can't see, but that would be the far east lane. That would be where we now have a straight through into Superior Marketplace. That would become a straight through and a left as part of the triple left. And so that would go to US 36. And then there would also be an additional fourth lane, which is the existing right turn lane to southbound Macaslin. Any questions on any of that as we move forward? We did some simulations, and we looked at basically turning movements for trucks on the inner lane and the outer lane, and the improvements that are being contemplated as part of this proposal would have some median improvements on Macaslin on the north side of the intersection, and we would also have some restriping improvements near the right-in, right-out exit of Superior Marketplace. Right now, it's kind of what we call pork chop shape, and we would need to restripe that to create a through lane there. There may be some signal pull improvements necessary in the area on the northeast corner, but we're trying to, we're gonna try and do this in a way to not have to impact that pull in that area. Just to kind of get a visual of that, this is Macaslin on the bottom, kind of looking at that median, we'd just be kind of shaving off a portion of the curb here just so we could get better radius coming off that turn for that inner turn lane and the semis. And then again, this area, so this is Macaslin, we're looking to the south. This striping area in the top part of this slide is the pork chop that I've described, and that would be restrypped to look more like a skip line effect, normal channelization. So after we did all the analysis, we kind of compared what we had versus what we would get by making these improvements. And the biggest benefits we saw after doing the analysis was that during the PM peak hour, this slide represents the existing queues that we see. And for just reference, this is about 200 feet back at First Avenue, and this is about 570 feet back, Second Avenue. This is the Conoco Station right here. So this kind of represents the existing queues. And then this is the PM peak hour. We also looked at the Saturday peak hour, and those queues get even longer, representative maybe more like 900 feet back in that Saturday peak hour. But essentially, you get the queue built up. We definitely fill up our inner leftmost turn lane, and at First Avenue, quite often, it's difficult to get into left turn movement from that position. Second Avenue's a little better, depending on the time of day, but it can also have its challenges as well. So that existing PM peak hour level of services is roughly a C. Side street access is probably a D to E level of service. So after these improvements, we'd anticipate during these PM peak hours, rush hour per se, that we still have a level of service C, so the same level of service before and after, however, our queue lengths have reduced. So our same level of service at the intersection, however, our side street level of services increased with increased access for First Avenue and Second Avenue, probably up to a level of service B or D, depending on the time of day. So that is, that is a good improvement for the overall area based off the analysis. One other point I'd like to make here is by adding the third outer left, if people are going to US 36, you know, it's easier at first to make that quick out now. You're not going across two lanes of traffic to get that left in, and you still would have a possibility to merge into other lanes if you needed to. So there is a, you're not crossing as many lanes at First Avenue, depending on where you're going. So the considerations we've kind of made as we move forward and come to this proposal recommendation for the board and the Planning Commission, you know, what are the costs versus the rewards to get this triple left in? We looked at two scenarios. One scenario actually considered adding an additional lane into the median, and so we'd have three lefts and a straight and a right at this area. And that was about $100,000 to make that happen. And if you kind of size up the size of a new lane and you look at the median out there, quite a bit of demolition, and I think it had a decent aesthetic impact to the area as well. So that was one option we looked at. And then the second option that we're recommending is more of a $20,000 to $40,000 improvement for the roadway, and that includes just doing some restriping, the concrete median work that we've talked about with the curb and other misplace improvements. We've also considered doing this with, with and without overhead signage, and that is kind of, contemplates a large tubular sign, much like you'd see on 36 or Northwest Parkway. I've got an example of that here later in the presentation. And then how this could ultimately coordinate well with the future Town Center to the east. So as I stated, the budget, if for 2011 is $100,000, the signal improvements we're recommending is about $20,000 to $40,000, and then the sign that we'll be looking at is about $60,000. So these would be triple left modifications. If we were just to do signal improvements and striping, you'd have some additional arrows in this area. We'd have additional signage on the mast arm, and then we'd put in some new signal heads that have the straights and the left turn arrows in this lane in particular. These, these signal heads here pretty much stay the same, and that's about mostly improvements on the signal. So that would be the first incremental step you could take. That'd be the $20,000 to $40,000 cost. Very minimal impact to the appearance of the area. And then you can take that a step further, do additional communication, try to make the area more user-friendly to the motorists and orient them to where they're navigating to. And that would be the addition of what we say is approximately a $60,000 sign. Right now, this contemplates 36 lanes of Boulder in the innermost left turn lane. Louisville would be the center left turn lane, then the outer left turn and through would be to Denver. As I stated before, you could possibly sign this 36. We wouldn't recommend that. And you could possibly sign this Louisville as well, and those configurations could work. We do have the option to try to letter these things in a way so we can add some signage later. We tried one option or one configuration, and we feel it's working well now. We want to experiment and try the other one, see if it works better. We have that ability. There's also been discussion about trying to do additional aesthetic enhancements to the tubular structure to try to give it a better appearance. Haven't gone into a lot of options on that yet. Probably some sort of facade that would maybe match the marketplace improvements in stone looks and whatnot. Possibly a color scheme that matches the surrounding green. So the outcomes of what we're, of the scenarios that we've looked at and what we're recommending, we feel we can improve some safety on the right side of the slide here, so in the Macaslin north and south. We feel by orienting everybody, getting them into dedicated lanes, we can reduce some of the merging that's going on in that area. We feel we've reduced the queue lengths roughly in half during our PM rush hour. AM rush hour, we've reduced them as well, not quite by half. And then on our PM peak Saturday rush hours, essentially the intersection is at capacity. And so we haven't really changed the queues, not because of the function of what we've done, but because there's just that much traffic. We still have that look coming in. And then third, we've increased our level of service for the side street access to most Marshall in this area. We've increased this capacity probably by a factor of two and a half. Each of these lanes can handle about 300 vehicles per hour, so you don't quite get that, you don't times that by three roughly, you get a little loss in there for various reasons. So it's about, you know, maybe 750 cars, 800 cars. Right now, we're seeing in our latest counts, I think we did last year, we're at 800 to 1,000 vehicles per hour in our peak. So trying to meet the existing peak that's there. So this is our last slide. I've kind of gone through this kind of fast, and I'm happy to open this up to questions, and I can work back to any other slides I know you want to look at in particular. Going up to the Commissioner.
Thanks. Let's start this end. I don't think I have any questions. Okay. I do. Were there any traffic studies done on the east, going east ramp to 36 off of Macaslin? Do we know how much traffic is really going on here?
East ramp, so the off-ramp, I mean, so you're, you're talking right here?
No. Off the side.
Going to Denver.
Going to Denver. I don't have those counts. We, based on the models, the queues were low. It wasn't a high amount of traffic. I think the queues were getting back roughly, you know, that's probably about 100 feet. So not a substantial amount of traffic. That probably adds up to, oh, if they queue up about that length now, it's probably 10 cars, 15 cars. I don't think it's a big one.
So we're building a lane essentially dedicated to traffic going off on 36 going east, right?
That would add a movement dedicated to that.
Dedicated to that.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
It would also add two lanes. So we also fight on the north side of the bridge. We get the westbound left turn, but we've made some safety improvements on the north side of the bridge, so it's not a permissive turn now. You don't get a green ball, and you can go whenever you want. We just have an arrow, so you have a protected movement there. That will back up sometimes. So if that's backed up, you can only queue one, or sorry, clear the queue for this lane to get around. If that's backed up by having this lane, you also have the potential to have two queues clear out and get the left so that people going to Louisville or 36 can get around that backup. Separate problem, but it does affect this area, and so it kind of remedies that at some points in time.
And how does the extra lane on the outside right of this queue lane configuration impact the area over by the bridge plus and the Superior liquor mart shop?
Same movement. They'll get that straight through when the triple left activates.
So you don't see that traffic backing up over there?
No.
Because we're just pushing.
It would go to a split phase movement, so if you're, if you're coming left to go southbound, you might wait about two seconds longer, but there's not a significant amount of traffic coming out that you would, it just wouldn't have a negative impact in that area or noticeable impact.
So it's largely to queue through more cars, more vehicles through that traffic intersection, so it's not backed up as far, basically?
Pretty much.
Are there any plans on the opposite side of the street?
Yeah, the opposite side of the street, which I don't have an overlay to show, but actually contemplates adding that additional lane in the median right here. So the option, the other option we looked at that was more expensive actually was the ultimate alignment for the Town Center intersection.
Okay. Because I mean, that, like coming from Louisville across the bridge on the Macaslin really seems to be, in my opinion, the bottleneck, which is not addressed in this project.
Coming from Louisville across the bridge, you put a bottleneck in this area?
Yep.
And so we, one thing we've done in the last, oh, we did it about two months ago, I, and I'm gonna, is the bottleneck you're identifying straight through or is it taking right?
No, it's making that right.
So you're at the merge in this area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I agree, and we've looked at this, and at this time, last year when we were putting the budget together, this project for various conversations had priority, and so that was scheduled in the budget this year. As part of the discussion with the board on this, they identified that merge as a high priority for them, and right now, we're anticipating getting that into the 2012 budget. We have analyzed several options in this area, and in probably the next 60 to 90 days, I can imagine, we'll bring a presentation forward to the board and most likely the Planning Commission, and we can contemplate those movements as well, what those improvements would look like.
Just curious.
Yep. Good question. Yep.
Hey, did you look at all on the far right, the lane that has a right turn right away that will be on expanding that queue?
Down, you're down here or over here? I'm sorry.
Down there.
I misunderstood.
On expanding that queue, because if you back up that third lane, people are gonna have a hard time entering that queue because it's very, it's kind of a short, quick queue there, almost matching the opposite side.
I want to make sure I understand what you just, you're worried about this right turn lane?
Yeah, yeah.
And if this queue backs up too far, then you eliminate that movement.
Right.
Right now, the models, based off the traffic we see that we have and the future traffic, we don't see that backing up. We have discussed that it would be an easy improvement to extend this lane if we need it.
That's why, well, why I'm bringing it up is if you're gonna put a sign, the sign has to be designed to encompass over that area if you're gonna improve it in the future. It can't be, you know, can't be sitting right there on that spot in the grass and then expect to come back and improve it later. That's just a concern I had was sometimes you come down that street and in that other lane, I mean, if you're talking backing up 900 cars at certain times of day, it's gonna fill all three of those lanes, and then nobody will be able to queue to turn right, and then I'm gonna make a right-hand turn and cut through original town. I mean, that's, and that's not what we want either.
So valid concern.
So it seems like with that much construction, striping, everything going on, that changing that queue to a little longer, I mean, I realize you can only match the other side because of the sidewalk and the existing Second Avenue there, but you could expand it to where you could get another two, three car access. That seems pretty simple.
I think it's a valid concern. In this type of scenario, what I usually recommend is to move forward with the improvements that have been modeled. The model does not show that interaction taking place, however, that doesn't mean it won't happen. If it does happen, it's probably gonna be at pre-major peak times, and we'll be able to identify that, and then we can prioritize that into a next year's CIP to address it. But that way, we're not making a full investment and possibly ending up with partial improvement that wasn't needed.
Yeah, just as long as the sign is...
Yeah, strategically placed.
Right. If you're gonna put an overhead structure like that, as long as it's got, it's over far enough that that can be done later is what I would consider. And then on the, the new added lane, turning left, is it gonna be a 36 only?
This is currently contemplated as a 36 only. At least it's contemplated to be signed, 36 only.
Okay.
It will DQ into a lane that deadens into 36.
Right.
That doesn't stop people from merging into Louisville.
Right. Just as long as they have at least some idea that before they make that turn, then it's an only lane and they're, you're not gonna have to attempt to merge if, if that's what they want to do.
The third lane, isn't it a straight through though to the Superior Plaza?
It's gonna be an either-or, as I understand it.
So this, this will be re-stripped, so the third lane, which is what I think we're talking on, is the easternmost lane, northbound lane on Macaslin, the green. This will be re-stripped, so it'll be a through, and then a deadend into 36 now.
Right.
And then you could merge in this area to get to Louisville, or if you want to get across to 36 west, nothing's happening.
But at the intersection, it's an either-or lane. You can either go straight or you could go left on 36.
Yes, that is true. But yeah, I did say it was 36 only, but it is through or 36. We maintain the existing through movement.
Right, right. Okay, Clint?
Talk a little bit more about what signal improvements have been done, I guess, to mitigate issues before this was contemplated.
So, the improvement that I referred to, this was a few months ago, what we did is, so you would have the traffic coming down off the bridge, and basically it would have to stop. And this left turn movement was happening at the beginning of the cycle for this intersection. So what we've done is we moved this left turn movement to the end of the cycle so that the traffic, the slug of traffic coming off the bridge gets a green, it can continue straight through to, and not have to slow down or stop. So that makes the intersection more efficient, and then you get your left turn movement after the majority of the traffic's through. It'll go to a permitted phase and then ultimately to, or a permissive phase, which is the full green ball, and then ultimately to a... green ball, and then ultimately to a protected arrow.
Okay. So, the signal that's on the bridge, westbound 36, that is, is that superiors?
That is superiors.
Okay.
And about a year ago on that signal, we changed that from a permissive, so a green ball...
Right.
To an arrow-only. And we did that because we were having pretty serious accidents once a month, people, and it was really weird, it was like 11 at night, 12 at night, times when you wouldn't think there's a lot of traffic, but the amount of accidents and the seriousness of them, injury accidents, led us to go to that protected-only movement 24 hours a day.
It just seemed, and I've noticed that, it's, it just seems like you've got, at Marshall and McCaslin here, you've got the permissive left across the same lanes that you do at westbound 36, and it seems like there's a lot more traffic that you're holding up by having that restricted left. I understand the accident piece of it, but that's where I see, and you alluded to that as being a possible problem, that's where I see there being a problem, is that with that being restricted, is there, is there consideration being given to, you know, at peak times, giving that more, giving more green arrow to that?
We're giving, you mean, on the north side of the bridge?
On the north side of the bridge, westbound 36, giving that more green arrow?
We have, we did. At the time that we made that adjustment, we gave it about as much green time as we can. Now, things that will trigger and really make that a challenging intersection, US-30 gridlocks, so it doesn't matter how many cars we try to funnel into it, they'll back up into that intersection, which will back us up. So, that's beyond our control. Also, if an emergency vehicle goes through there and triggers the light and gets it off-cycle, it'll cut the cycle short, that'll get things off, or if a pedestrian activates it and does the crosswalks, that'll, so those are three things outside of mother nature weather that'll back it up. Most of the time, it's just working well, and we think it's, right now, the best configuration for safety and service.
Is consideration being given to making that westbound from McCaslin to Marshall, making that protected? I mean, are you seeing accidents because people turning across? I guess, now that you've put that left at the end of the cycle, is that kind of mitigated accident concerns there?
We haven't seen any accidents since we've done that. And the nature, the nature of the accidents on the north side of the bridge, although there were 23 accidents, there's a higher nature of injury accidents in that area. And we don't know if just people are gunning out of Dillon, or what. This area had a higher level, had 35, but most of it was just property accidents, not injury accidents. And some of this accident data isn't, it doesn't exactly pinpoint a lot of things. A lot of times, when you see injury accidents, that's gonna probably be more like a T-bone, and when you see the property accidents, that's probably more like a rear-end type of situation.
Okay. Okay. My only other comment would be on that sign bar, I would be in favor of some kind of aesthetic improvement, the metal bar, that's very unattractive. So, something, something like the sign arm, where maybe you only add an arm and a pole on one side, I think, and I don't know that the sign's gonna be that, I don't know if that's a scale...
That's pretty much the scale. It's a pretty big sign.
I don't know that they need to be that big, in my opinion.
Usually, you see it about going 65 miles per hour, so that's why it looks so bad here.
Right, that's an interstate sign, and that shouldn't be, I don't think we need interstate grade for that intersection. And maybe, you know, maybe another consideration might be some backlit signs, something that didn't require a light on, it could just make it lower-profile.
Yeah.
I think either a single pole, or paint it green, or, I don't know about rocks, that'd look kind of strange, but something different.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, was there any consideration given to the right-turn sign? That doesn't show on there, but the...
Like, so, we're looking at the intersection of this right turn right here?
To Rock Creek.
To Rock Creek. Yeah, we considered it in the fact, we wanted to see if the, in the model, the queues block the access to it, but essentially, that flows pretty well. You can get the right turn on red there, and, you know, it generally doesn't queue up too bad, even now. Now, I'm not here all the time, and many of you are, so if my perception isn't 100% accurate, feel free to tell me.
The first question was, Fred, you'd mentioned this was approved at one point, but not implemented, and why was it not implemented?
Well, my recollection is it was not implemented because at the time, I think the traffic, the traffic studies indicated that, you know, at least at that time, it wasn't needed, I don't think, number one. And number two, there was a little bit of resistance at that time to a triple left. Wasn't a lot of familiarity with it. I mean, we're talking a number of years ago now, when the marketplace was first started and that road was built. That was part of the issue, and I think the other part then was, is the intersection right-of-way is quite wide, so it was felt that, you know, maybe at a later date, you know, they could implement this third left at a later date, and this is where we're at now.
Okay. That's what I feel, whether it were technical reasons or anything that prevented it?
No, I don't recall any technical stuff. It was more those kinds of considerations.
Okay. And just to further comment on the sign, so, I want to keep in mind that you are 100-plus feet from residential area along this stretch, and so, I find this not, I'm not, if you go back to the signs, I don't think this is an option at all. I think you'll get tremendous resistance, I think, very, I mean, you got homes, right? You have homes that are looking out their window at that.
Right.
So, I really think that has to be settled. It has to be, so, I want that comment to be real strong, that's really gotta be looked at.
I think that's been the most consistent comment I've heard across the board and the planning commission, and we definitely take it to heart.
Okay. How do you evaluate the percentage of people that just ignore what they're supposed to do? And, because I travel this, I live here, and I travel this multiple times a day, and in almost every situation, and I'd say more as you're approaching the 95th percentile mark, and it's light, you've got multiple people who are in one lane, clearly know they should be in the other one, you know, get in the left lane because it's shorter so they can cut over and go down 36. Not occasionally, all the time. Literally, I rarely don't see it. So, how, so now, you've got three lanes to put people in. How do you evaluate, you know, whether that's even gonna make...
I mean, triple lefts function in other areas just fine.
In this short of a distance, too? This is a pretty, this is like the minimum distance, right, between lights that you're allowed by state law?
When you, you're talking from Sycamore to...
From, no, no, from, so, on McCaslin, from Marshall to the light at 36, isn't that, we talked about this when we first did it, isn't that like the bare minimum that you're even allowed to have, light distances between lights, like, that's like the shortest queue space?
It's probably, it's pretty close.
Pretty close.
But I don't think we're in new territory either, with what's been done.
And then, in that same, just thinking about that queue length, and I'm sure you consider this, but I just want to ask you, it looks like we're creating the capacity to send more volume through the intersection, is that correct? And by doing that, if you have the amount of cut-over, cut-across traffic that we're talking about, then, I mean, you need to leave a little more buffer for the, I mean, you're gonna get people who are gonna go for the shortest lane so they can get through the light. So, now, you're creating three lanes from which to do that, and you're assuming that that green lane's gonna stay short, but I guarantee you, it's not. People want to get through that light. I want to get through that light. Everybody who comes up to this light wants to get through that light. That is unquestionably, you know, 30 to 40% of the people who come up to that intersection just want to get through that light, because it feels long, and it's, you don't want to sit through it a second time. So, you see, everybody's jockeying just for the shortest lane, so they're gonna go for your green, your green's high. They're gonna need to widen that right lane, because people aren't gonna use that to go on 36, they are going to use it to get through the intersection and then move into work. So, are you sending more volume through, or are you gonna try to keep the volumes the same by shortening the light cycles?
The volume pretty much is what it is, but we're shortening the queues by kind of spreading out. So, we're kind of diluting the volume. Right now, it's concentrated in two lanes, we're trying to dilute it into three.
So, you have to shorten the light cycle, so, to reduce...
Keep the same light cycle. I mean, potentially...
If you do that, you'll have three lanes.
Potentially, yes, you could say that we've increased the, we've gone, so, right now, we have approximately 800 to 1,000 vehicles per hour in our heavy times. We're gonna have that regardless. So, we will get more traffic through. Right now, you are limited in the amount of traffic you can get through the cycle, and so, you may not get as much to the westbound US-36 movement on the bridge as you would if you were dedicated a little more here, or get more people to Lewisville. The 36 kind of probably is what it is, we've touched on that, that it's probably minimal impact there. So, you'll get a little bit more traffic through, not enough to cause a problem up on the bridge, we don't feel.
Or even that span between...
Or even in this span, yeah.
Okay.
Currently, the model, the, so, the best we can do is try and model it with the industry software that we have, and then, like any model, it has its flaws, but right now, what that has shown is there is not much of a queue going to 36. People may try to jockey, I can't stop that, and if it does become a problem for the right-turn lane, we can certainly do additional projects to lengthen that turn pocket to increase that level of service for that movement. But I wouldn't recommend that out of the gates. As far as just driving crazy, from my perspective, all I can do is try to set up the intersection as efficient as I can, as the best we think we can do. From there, that becomes an enforcement issue that we coordinate with Boulder County Sheriff. So, if we feel like we're getting, you know, people jockeying into the 36 east, and they're coming in, and they're cutting all the way across, and they're causing accidents or reckless behavior, that's certainly something we can work with Boulder County Sheriff to try to mitigate.
Okay. And the other, this is more of a higher-level comment slash question. So, there's an economic development committee that started meeting recently, and trustee Pennington and Hanson are, have kind of been leading that up, and some of the discussions in those meetings have been around the improvement of the Sura area, and trying to figure out how to make the smaller shops work better. And one of the discussions around that is adding more residential to that area, again, no, I mean, way-high view.
Yeah, mixed-use stuff, high-density, medium-density stuff.
And one of the concerns, I have a huge concern with that, because this is, this right here is the only way out of the area, meaningful way out of the area. And just as we think about this whole intersection, and this whole exit, and getting out of the original town neighborhood of the Sura District, and now we start looking at adding the 54 homes that have been approved from Remington, the building of Guardian Storage, a few more lots that can still be developed as multi-use, even potentially multifamily, and now this, you know, high-level vision of potentially adding more residential to the Sura District, just generating more and more and more people into this little area where we have, well, three to four lanes to get out of. And I want to make sure staff is just aware of that and thinking about that long-term, how we're gonna deal with this area and moving traffic in and out of it, because it's already a problem. I, you know, this is gonna help, I think this is awesome, I think this is gonna be a help, I don't know how long it'll last, and if we continue to make improvements to the Sura District, and add more mixed-use, and add more residential, it's not gonna be very long, I would say, you know, just less than five years, we're gonna start running into more problems. So, I think I'm just bringing that up publicly and asking that we pay really close attention to this entire area and how we're gonna move traffic in and out of it as we go forward.
Sure.
And then, am I looking at this right, that there's a, this is just the last comment, that there's this, can you go back to the page that shows the sign that we're all complaining about? Yeah, the light, is that, are you adding a third light with a left-turn signal on there? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And so, that'll have a straight, that'll also have a, what do you call it?
Passive green.
Permissive green? Okay. So, the people know to go straight and turn right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
I don't have any questions, I'm just gonna comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, no questions. Okay, go ahead.
Word cut from 101 South Fourth. Have they actually run a traffic count on these roads, on Marshall Road, on McCaslin? Have you run a count?
Yes, yes.
Tell me more closely enough, thinking how many cars go there. I want to know what the current traffic count is now.
Approximately 20,000 to 30,000 cars per day.
Now, have they given any consideration of closing the road off coming out of the Superior Marketplace over on the east side? Because you're creating another lane going to Denver, and you got the traffic coming out of there, we're gonna run into the same problem on that side of the road as we got on the west side of the road, getting off the turnpike, we're zigzagging in, we're gonna have the same thing, three lanes going that way with that short distance around that light and that intersection there. Any reason why they couldn't take consideration of closing that intersection off, making a little light out of the liquor area, up to the light, come out the light, still come up this street? Because they can only go right, and you're gonna have these people switching back and forth, like we do coming off the other way. And you're gonna say, Denver east, you know, go to Denver east, we got that problem there, as I can see. You have it now. When you take that second lane and go that way, and people coming out of the intersection and trying to come out and get over this way?
Mm-hmm.
You see where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
That's just an idea, that maybe they could close that intersection off, because you can't drive in there, you have to go to the right, you can come northbound to get in there anyway. The only one, people come out of the liquor area or Old Chicago, just gotta go to the right, and count the median there.
To force them back to the light, you're suggesting?
So, have them come back to the light, so we wouldn't have the problem that we got on the west side, because we already got it on that side. Because you know they're gonna come down that right, and they're gonna switch, wanna switch over, no doubt about it, my mind, I see a day out right now.
Comment?
Sure.
Suggestions?
I think it's a good suggestion, and a good concern, valid concern. What I can say is my experience in implementing these types of improvements is, it's best to work through this incrementally. There are perceptions and our fears can, generally, as we are trying to develop the scope of these projects, lead us to the worst nightmares and a lot of improvements that, or heartache or commercial developments that we may not need to cause. While there are peak periods, there also are, the majority of the time, a lot of gaps, a lot of periods where traffic can't get across there safely from that right-in, right-out. So, it could be a problem in the future, but I'd recommend that we take this incrementally, and if it proves to be a problem, then we address it at that point.
On that same, in that same intersection coming out of Bridge Plus, will you narrow that down to a stop sign? Because right now, it's very wide, just come on out, and so now, you're sort of changing the world there.
Mm-hmm.
You also have a lot of people that go straight across, come around, to do that deal as well. Are you gonna bring that back tight, for stops sign up?
Yeah, we will tighten that up, maybe, we may have to do some concrete work in that area, do a smaller right-in, right-out, to make it more formal.
And just, I mean, and part of it's, I'm thinking about the pedestrian piece of it too, you know?
Right. Yeah, and so, if we did that... Yeah, and so if we did that small right in, right out, that kind of gives you a refuge too, if you feel there's a lot of kind of go traffic there.
And that raises a question about bikes. What consideration has been given? You're taking away their lane more or less now because what they're able to do now, because it's not heavily used, is they're able to use that right turn lane because it's not heavily used. People are, you know, it's generally a little, just more gentle of a lane, the right turn only into the, what is the name of that shopping center?
Superior Plaza.
Superior Plaza, thank you. In both places, both at Marshall and up at their entrance. And you're taking that away. So how are, and as we know, this is a huge biking community and it's getting bigger and bigger. How do you envision, are you going to just put them in the flow of traffic? Are you going to put a bike lane up there on the road?
Uh, currently, it's kind of how they are right now. They're within the flow of traffic. You know, if we could explore the incorporation of a bike lane and see if we can skinny some lanes up, we can certainly explore that. Right now, again, we're just trying to go for the simplest incremental improvement we could. So right now, they're going with the flow of traffic and the current proposal has also gone with the flow of traffic.
One consideration, and I know most bikers wouldn't love this, but you do it down at the, at the new circle at Colton and McCaslin, you have kind of a bail lane so that you can, so that you can't come across and hop onto the sidewalk easily. And I don't know if there's a way to encourage bikes to do that, to bring them up onto the sidewalk for that section, right? So if they're making that left turn, I mean, even if they're coming down McCaslin, which a lot of them do, you know, giving them a way to just sort of direct them onto the sidewalk and let the sidewalk serve the bikes as well. I mean, it's not a heavy pedestrian area. I mean, we're not, you know, not talking about a lot of people walking, but just some ideas.
You know, just sitting on my feet, listening to you and looking at the area, I think we have some width here. These are pretty wide lanes. We may, you know, the bike lane now is here.
Mm-hmm.
And if it were to continue into the left turn that is supposed to have, this model is the smallest queue, we could perhaps explore the bike lane continuing along here. Then you'd have a dashed crossover up at 36 to get them across to the bridge. At that point, they have a, they do have a refuge they could get into if they choose to.
And the way you see that in most areas is you don't shove them to the right. You keep them, they would be in that, yeah, they would be in that second lane. They would be in between the middle lane and the right lane. You follow me?
I do.
I don't know if that would work there or not, but because you, if you keep them in the right lane, you're right, you have to figure out a way to, they're going to have to look, they're going to have to cross the street. They're going to have to cross, you know, they're not going to be able to go with the flow of traffic. But then they can't get across the bridge anyways, so.
Yeah, I've seen it both ways. I think, given the nature of the spacing and the nature of people possibly still jockeying, I think it's more comfortable to have them here. You can cross them in a more controlled area there.
Maybe get them up on the sidewalk at the bridge.
It must be realistic. These guys are pretty independent.
They are.
Wherever I strip the bike lanes, they're going, they go where they want. They come flying through this merge sometimes faster than the cars.
Yeah.
I mean, these guys, the hardcore guys are pretty brave.
Yeah.
In fact, I think they think they're immune from some of the traffic laws, but-
Well, they figure if they're going as fast as cars, they have a better chance of survival.
It could be.
Okay.
But that's a great point and it's something we should need to certainly consider in the final, final configuration.
Anything else for discussion?
Yeah, I thought about George's comment and looking at it, coming in and out of the Superior, Superior Plaza. And I think you're right. I think, I think you don't shut it down immediately. It could have an effect on businesses. We don't want to affect the businesses if we don't have to. I do think it could be an issue. But I also think, from what I've seen, aren't too many cars that come out of there and take advantage of that at one time. And the light is stopping traffic momentarily between the left-hand turn people and the straight people getting started. So they should have an opportunity to jump out of there. So I think probably do what we can in that little intersection there, but not, not close it off until we see that there is some issue there. I still though question the right-hand turn lane coming off on Marshall Road and the stacking, to Bob's point. Not only will you have the people that want to get on 36 only, but you'll have people filling in that gap because they just want to make the light and then they figure, they'll figure it out after they make the turn. And that will back up, I think, and block people from taking a right-hand turn. And to me, that's a pretty small improvement to expand that and mirror the other side as far as queuing that right-hand turn onto McCaslin in the scheme of things. I'm not a fan of the sign either. I don't know what the answer is there. I'm almost inclined to say, go and put a sign up and put all the signage at the intersection and the people that tend to frequent that center, frequent it often enough that there'll be a short learning curve and then they'll know where they're supposed to be without having to put a monumental sign there in that part of town, close to original town, lit and ugly. So, but I don't see how you do it with one arm either. I don't know how you stretch enough signage out there. I guess if it was big enough and sturdy enough, you could.
Some fallback, we have talked about these with the town manager and he's aware of this concern as well. If you're coming across from Dillon Road, there's more of the cluster signage, so it's off to the side, not quite as clear. You gotta do a lot more figuring out what it's trying to tell you.
Right.
It's certainly an option. So if there is a strong enough feel from the boards and the commission, we can look at those alternatives.
They use in Louisville a different kind of overhead signage since there are years ago. Does that-
Say that again.
There's another kind of overhead signage at those intersections in Louisville, other than this interstate-looking?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty small and it's hard to, it's not really the, it's not really to the federal standards, but it's there. Wouldn't recommend following suit.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment. I've looked at this and I've talked to Kurt about it. I'm just not in favor of the triple left. It scares me, I think, of the triple left. And I'm like Bob, you know, the traffic gets in the shortest lane and they get in that inside lane because it is the shortest and invariably they're scooting all the way over. So if we have this, then they're going to get in that outside left lane and, oh, I'm going to Boulder and scoot over. And I totally understand the reason for it. I just think if it was left as it was and signage a lot better, but I'm not a traffic engineer, but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Want to strab out for an opinion? Somebody want to present something on the table? Do we want to, do we want to do it in pieces? Do we want to do the lane and do we want to do the signs separately? Any suggestions?
I mean, do we want to talk at all about what Phyllis brought up too? Because, I mean, we, you know, none of us have really said that. I mean, it's-
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a concern. I mean, but as you said, there's a certain percentage that's always going to just be knuckleheads out there. I mean, you come the other way, I don't know how many times I'm coming towards Superior from Louisville and there's somebody that's in the far-left lane and all of a sudden they realize they're supposed to be in the other lane to, the right lane to get on to 36 going east and all of a sudden they're stopping and cutting across. There's always, always knuckleheads out there that are going to be, you know, mucking it up. But I think, you know, to me, if you're in that right, that added turn lane, you turn left 36 only and you got to sit there and mess to try and get in, or you get stuck having to get on to 36 because you can't get in, I think that's something you only do maybe once, but it could be wrong. I think we got to try and mitigate traffic out of the marketplace for the sake of our businesses and our residents over there. So personally, I'm in favor of the turn lanes. There's aspects of the project I'm not in favor of, but I am in favor of trying to get a turn lane to help traffic.
When I first heard about this, I was initially opposed to it because I just really didn't think it was completely necessary. In a way, we're trying to mitigate the worst of times. I go, I don't, I used to live in Sagamore the first seven years of Sagamore and I never really experienced these problems. Now, that was the first seven years. It's a lot more developed now. And I know that in peak times, it gets really backed up there, but I think there are always going to be peak times and there's always going to be backups. I mean, if you put five lanes in there, there's going to be times when it's just backed up, 36 is backed up with that left turn lane. So I'm in favor of it because I think it will increase the size of the funnel and improve most of the time. But I think for people to be disappointed if it's not smooth flow all the time, I don't think that's realistic, just given that there's a lot of intersections and a lot of cities in this country and world that it's gridlocked every single day just because it's just volume, just too many people and not enough roads, so.
It's like driving on 36, and it's gridlocked.
And I think one issue from at least the neighborhood's perspective is that the weekend has become the peak time, not, you know, certain hours, but just like the whole weekend. It's great. I mean, and you, you know, I sat in a revenue meeting and I saw, you know, our Costco revenue up over $9 million for the first time. Well, there's only one way that happens and that's cars pouring in there and pouring out, so. And it is, I mean, and it's showing, you know, and so people coming out of, well, from Sagamore is lots of an issue because you're all the way back to the light, you know, so you're generally coming in. But, you know, people coming out of original town on second or first unless they come up to Sycamore and around, which, again, people don't like to turn left to go right. They just don't, you know, they come down first or they come down second and try to get out. But, and I kind of, I mean, I kind of agree with Phyllis too. I, I just feel like we're creating a, we may be creating a little bit of a monster because it's one thing to have people in the wrong lane, cutting across one lane. That's one thing. But now we're sort of creating this, you can be way over here and you really need to be over here and I'm going to deal with it after I get through the intersection. And the people who do that are fairly, to high number. It's a noticeable percentage, I guess I should say. But I also agree that we need to get people out of the, we got to figure out a way to get people out of there because it's, you know, big times it is, it's bad, so.
One thing I can say, that the way the signs are now, it doesn't say 36 East or 30. So having signs that would say that, we'd have thought about this years ago, we could have put those signs up there. It would have helped a lot because people will, oh, well, I turned, so then either lane will be okay. Well, it's not really okay. So I think signage would be really, really helpful in having those signs that says East 36, West 36.
I think some type of overhead signage is essential because otherwise it just gets missed. And so I think if we can figure out a way to do it so that it looks somewhat tasteful, I think that is going to be a big part of the solution.
I want, you know, I was just thinking about what Phyllis said and I wonder where we are here. If, if signs were, you know, whether they're the street signs we talked about, you know, that like Louisville's, that we don't, Louisville has that we don't, you know, the single pole signs, as well as potentially over here, you know, overhead, identify like the right place?
No, come down.
So when they're making this left here-
Marshall's right here.
Yeah, so when they're ma- sorry, yeah, when they're making this left, there's some signage here that tells them what lane they should be in. And I wondered, what if you, what if you got, what if you did make this a solid line that went, you know, a solid lane that went to 36 so that when you come across here, you can immediately get into the 36 lane, that you're not, because right now, you're forced to go right. It says it's right turn only into the, into the shopping center there. And have we put any consideration to just making this a lane, straight to 36, tightening up at intersections, put some signage like Phyllis was saying here that indicates that you should be in this lane if you want to go to 36 West or Louisville or this lane if you want to, oh, I'm sorry, 36 East and Louisville and if you're in this, I'm sorry, this lane.
Yes.
Sorry, I keep getting them wrong. So if you're, you're in this lane, you've got the signage to go-
You're driving like the people that you're scared of.
What's that?
I said, you're driving like the people you're scared of.
I know, exactly, exactly. I have a, my in-laws are from Vermont. They don't have these big old intersections and they get the, so if you're, if you're here, you have signage that tells you you're in Louisville or Boulder and if you're in this lane, you're Louisville or Denver. Seems like it would be relatively inexpensive, it would be restriping and, yeah. You know, and I don't know if it would change how people queue up or not. Here, but can you go back to the queuing slide that shows the unhappy faces? Okay. Because this is your concern right now, I guess, is this middle lane here.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
We're trying to provide additional.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Could you point out on this particular slide where that sign is?
I would be-
The proposed sign?
Generally in this area.
Okay.
And you've got, you've got homes here.
Uh-huh.
And you've got homes back here.
Back there.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm not familiar with more lights.
I can understand that.
Wouldn't the sign though need to be over all three lanes? Because if you put it over two lanes, then you're not, how are you going to sign three lanes when you're over two?
But I think it's telling you what's ahead of you.
Right at that angle pointed at left. No, it's got to be lane light, it's got to be.
You'd point way back here. Yeah, I get.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You, yeah.
So, yeah.
No, it's really okay. That's up a lot closer.
But that is up a lot closer than what-
We were, sorry, we had also talked about trying to get it moved back, but we would have to try to move it back as much as we could to get, if we wanted to strategize about additional stacking in that right turn. I wouldn't say this is the exact spot. We just kind of tried to do a quick visual.
So what are you trying to follow? What's federal standards? I mean, what makes you have to put those-
We will follow the manual of uniform traffic control devices. It's a federal standard for signage.
Okay. I don't see those kind of signs anywhere around our residential areas other than on, I just don't. I mean, does anybody know where it goes?
Interstate.
Other than on the interstate?
Interstate, that's what-
Yeah, that's, and I wish I should.
I mean, are we required to do that?
No, we're not required.
Okay.
We were trying, I would say, we were trying to be overly communicative in this endeavor.
Okay, all right. So we're not required to do this? We can do-
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Kurt, is there a way to put the signage on the road? Have you been in other places where they tell you like Denver this way, Boulder that way, actually painted into the road?
Yeah, there'd be signage like this.
That's a good idea.
But then you'd have like five or six signs.
No, I mean like in the road. They'll have a like stencil along the road, like Denver this lane, Boulder this lane.
Yeah, we could put some symbols in the road.
Yeah, roll.
A lot of people are-
Stroke lights.
Color-coded. Yeah, we could do that. I don't know the effectiveness of it, but it's not-
I have just something I've seen other places that wouldn't be, you know, up in the air or over everyone's head.
Yeah. I mean, again, the sign, what I can tell you is I think overall the board liked the sign however they wanted, the aesthetics improved just as strongly as commission, planning commission does. But we can take the sign incrementally too, if everybody's in agreement on that. We can, you know, start with that and if it feels like it's operated efficiently, we don't have to go to the sign. But right now, the current, coming into this meeting, the current thought process was the sign. Just to back with you.
One other comment. We talked about the bike lane. You said you had some room to narrow lanes and I, we're just driving around and I, I work in Boulder, so I, and we do service, so I drive all over Boulder. And where the lane-
And where the lanes are narrower, people seem to be, they slow down, they're a little more cautious, they're not quite as aggressive in those areas. And I wonder with or without the bike lane, just making things tighter so it's less comfortable to lane jump. It's easy to lane jump when you have all this room to joggy and look around. I mean, if you're in a narrow, tight, tight lane, your tendency is not going to be to look around and, I mean, you're going to be a lot more careful. And I'm wondering if just using narrowing of your permissible lane would even help?
We could do that. At this point, I don't know if I'd recommend it because you're, you've got traffic coming northbound to Castle and they're going at a clip, whether we want it or not.
But narrow lanes, well, I...
At this point, it's how we don't have a plan to narrow the lanes up, up to the south of the intersection. I would say that idea could be valid, but it probably should be implemented as more of a corridor plan for McAsland rather than a narrowing here to address the triple left movement. Because you're going to take people from wide lanes to very narrow lanes.
But aren't you doing, aren't you doing that at the bridge already? Didn't we have to do that in order to create three lanes across the bridge?
I'd have to verify that, to be honest with you.
Those lanes are way, way narrower across that bridge and they are...
I think we did squeeze them down to a minimum.
And it works. I mean, I was, oh, I was so skeptical of that bridge, that that would never work, but I'll tell you, those narrow lanes, I mean, people are pretty careful going across that bridge because you'll bump into somebody if you, if you just...
True.
And truly, I, you know, I mean, so we're already stepped them down. I guess I would ask that we at least consider, consider whether it makes sense stepping them down, you know, just north of McAsland rather than at the bridge, just as, I don't know. Again, I think we're trying to shove a lot of cars and if you give them room to do the wrong thing, they just tend to do the wrong thing. They got on that bridge, they're pretty, even when people are coming from Louisville or in their, they're in the wrong lane, they're not cutting over. I mean, they might stop, like you said, they'll have to stop because, you know, they just stop and go, oh my God, I'm going to get on the highway.
Right.
And people are a lot more courteous because, you know, yeah, you don't have a lot of room to, you can't just cut somebody off in that, on that bridge, you just don't have room to do it.
That's true.
So Fred, are we voting to recommend this to the board?
Well, I think you're, yeah, you're voting to recommend or not recommend is a basic issue, but if you're recommending it, then you may want to identify the suggestions you have agreed upon, like to forward those suggestions to the board for their consideration. In terms of, basically it's about designing this thing.
Right.
Both the road as well as the sign.
So I think at this point, maybe what we should do is take a straw vote to see if we're even going to recommend it to begin with, to the board. And then if we decide that we are going to recommend it to the board, then to cipher through some recommendations to pass along to the board. As far as any changes or modifications that we might recommend, but just take a straw vote just on the general concept of adding a third left turn lane. So all those in favor? Okay. Five in favor and two?
Two.
Okay. So I think we're going to recommend the three left turn lanes. So let's discuss what, what we would like to see pass along, recommendations to go with it to the board. Would you start? Phyllis, you'd like to start? Bob?
Well, yeah, obviously the elimination or at least substantial reduction of the lane, individual lane signage on Marshall Road.
Okay.
Either eliminate it or reduce it significantly.
The large overhead.
Yeah, the large overhead.
On Marshall Road?
On Marshall Road.
A new sign.
Interstate sign.
Yeah, the new interstate sign.
The sign for the poles.
Yeah, the big, the big...
It's a fair state. Yeah, if you could just suspend them in that area.
Yeah. They'd still be awfully big. Probably they would have something a little bit. I'd like to pass on the consideration of bike lane, so thinking, at least, consider how bike traffic's going to flow, necessarily limit to what we think they should do, but just consider how bike traffic's going to flow. And I'd like consideration put to narrowing the lanes north of Marshall before, you know, to equivalent to what the bridge is, you know, matching them up to bridge. I'll back off of that if other people oppose it.
So what?
No, I'm fine with these.
Clint?
I would second the notion of improvements or other, reviewing other options for the sign. That's my, my biggest concern. I'm not in favor of lane modification. I think that would take us backwards instead of forwards, so I'm not, I guess I'm not aboard there.
Okay. Definitely the sign, anything that can be done. Probably, I'm probably in favor of a two-stage, trying to do something on a smaller scale and see if it suffices. And then if that didn't work, then look at adding a larger, more attractive sign along the lines of what you had only more attractive. But I would like to see another option put in place first and then graduate into the bigger sign if that just was not working. Bike traffic consideration, I think that should be in there. I am also not in favor of narrowing the lanes coming down to McAsland and then narrowing them at that point. I think that's, I think the bridge is one thing, know you're coming to the bridge, know everything's kind of squeezing down there, but to do that further back, I think could be a problem. And then I'd also like to throw in the consideration of the expanding the right-hand turn lane.
Stack lane.
The stack lane. Because I think in looking at, you can get four or five more cars in there and that may be just what we need. Tom?
I'd like to add that we look at possibly stenciling the pavement to dedicated lanes, look at the improvement of dedicated lights, directional dedicated light arrows in the lens themselves. I think that would probably help some of the immediate concerns when people approach the intersection even from a business to go in the right slot.
You mean in the light, in the signal itself?
Mm-hmm. I know they can do that, so. I mean, I don't know what the price would be, but that's a pretty, I mean, you've gone to LEDs, I'm not really sure if that's valid.
You kind of, like the light comes on, you'd see like US 36 in the light, kind of.
Yeah, or just plain simple lero and a straight directional type thing. I think they're valid, I think they are, but I'm not positive. If you work more, you work more towards that end, you'd probably get more bang for the buck. And I guess that's really what we're talking about here is the budget's a reasonable budget, but just not going to do a whole lot at this point. And I would encourage future planning to look at the comprehensive plan for the whole Sagamore, original town. Yeah, I have my own ideas on what I think could happen, but I think that needs to be looked at. I don't think this is going to be a long-term solution, personally.
I agree with the sign, it's ugly. It needs to be an alternative. And definitely with bike traffic, given that Superior, I think one of the mandates the trustees have is to make it a bikeable, walkable city, so we've got to watch out for bikes. I also don't agree that we should narrow the lanes now. I think we should definitely review that over time and see if it does get chaotic. That's a good mitigating tactic after the fact.
Okay. All right. So I think...
Could we maybe consider this overall, what are we going to do with this whole area? Maybe it's just a separate recommendation to the board and maybe a separate motion that just says, along with this, we just want to recognize that this area is growing and improving and not tie it, maybe not tie it to this motion, but maybe make a second recommendation.
That comprehensive...
Kind of what, yeah, just comprehensive review of the Sura area and the consideration of increasing residential and how you're going to move traffic out of that, you know, sometime over the next five, you know, what's going to happen over the next five years.
We're just not going to let you out, Bob.
Yep. Want to drive with the rocker, do a U-turn and come down.
Makes sense, you don't want to do organic growth.
I think we're pretty clear on the, nobody seems to be in favor of the large overhead sign. That all other options, board should look at all other options to get around that large overhead sign. I think it's pretty clear, favorite bike traffic consideration. I'm not sure about increased right turn queue because it came down at this end of the table. So straw vote, anybody who wants to recommend that they look at increasing that right turn queue.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. The narrowing of the lanes, let's take a straw vote, who's in favor of narrowing the lanes before the bridge between Marshall Road and the bridge?
Scratch.
Okay. Tom's recommendation of, I think that may go along with the signage aspect of not having a large overhead sign, maybe put in...
Traffic striping.
Traffic striping as an alternative and alternative type intersection lighting and signage. And then, am I missing anything? And then we want to make a note to town board about content, comprehensive review of basically just what's happening in the area of that intersection and the Sura area. Is that correct?
Can we just say so moved?
Yeah.
So moved? Okay.
Give me a second.
Okay, no.
So formally than that?
No, you don't have to make a motion, you can say that, but he's got to say who made the motion in a second.
Okay. So Bob and Cole made the motion? Do we have a second? Tom Ricker makes the second. All those in favor?
Opposed.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, there wasn't a hand that moved it.
Okay, thank you very much. Staff announcements?
I do not have any and neither does Beth.
Okay.
Nothing really, too much to report at this point.
Okay. Anything, nothing upcoming that we know about?
No, not that I have been informed of.
Okay.
Very good.
Look ahead, doesn't have anything for 5-3, so unless we add something, but we'll keep you informed. Do you plan to use the council or not?
Okay, great.
No word from Rennington or whatever?
No.
What's this story about a hotel? I get neighbors telling me about hotels.
Have you ever heard about that?
Yeah, I've heard about that rumor, too.
Oh, it's...
Well, there's the only place that I know where a hotel might be posted down on a resident property and we, they're still, I, you know, dealing with whatever internal issues they're dealing with, but I do not have any information on that at all.
Moving very slow.
Okay. All right?
All right.
Injured.
Okay.